All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first meeting of 2023. First, I'll have our city clerk do the roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Endipure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And first up, we have a selection for our deputy mayor. So I will ask for nominations from the floor. Councilmember Howe.
I nominate Amy Lamb.
I will second that. I don't need to second, just kidding. All right. Do I have any other nominations? All right, all those in favor for Deputy Mayor Lamb staying as Deputy Mayor Lamb, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Anyone? All right. Seven zero, congratulations. Please continue on all your great work. All right, rough start to this year for my meeting. Okay. Next, we will do our Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see, Councilmember Trine, if you wouldn't mind leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, do you mind doing the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salage peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Next, we will move to public comment. Not sure if we have any in the room. All clear? Okay. So we move to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Okay, we have two commenters currently. I will promote the first one. Oh, now we have three. Mary Victor. Mary, you're muted.
Sorry. Good evening, City Council. Happy New Year. This is Mary Victor. I wanted to speak on a few things tonight. First, on your consent agenda, you do have the stormwater rates, and I'm sure that you're just going to pass that through. But I would like the City Council and also staff to be aware that there are places that do flood in the city and things that are actively flooding that might not be addressed by a project or were addressed by a project but have been removed or that are moved out too far in the future that we should be addressing those because when flooding happens, it's just like a leak. Leaks don't usually get smaller, and they can come with really big storms. So I hope during the winter season here, you'll be thinking about that and being able to take input and make changes as this year progresses. Also, on the George Davis Creek, I continue to have some concerns about if that project is actually going to be helpful to the salmon or not, and I believe other people have written in on that. So hopefully, you'll be willing to take topics on that in this next month. There is a co-cony work group meeting at the end of the month, and I believe some of the numbers for the return of the salmon will be available as well. The other thing going on is Samamish Plateau Water has done their wastewater comprehensive plan. They only do it every 10 years. It was done in 2003, 2013, and then they did the draft of it by September. It's been out for public review and public comment had to be in in any of the agencies by December 30. I believe that David Pyle, Community Development Director, did give comments. And one of those comments is that SPW, Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, does their accounting for how many homes and the full zoning buildout of the city a little bit different than the city. But I think it's really important to be aware of those numbers, use them, and have close communication and work closely with them as you consider what to do with the city and any upzoning or changes. I'd also like to note that there are differences in the amount of sewer and water that are used by multifamily, which usually has lesser requirements than single-family homes. In a very large part of the city, about 85% to 87% is single-family home. So we don't have the housing variety and types that we need to cover diversity and essential services for the city. I also see that you have climate on the agenda for tonight. I would like to say I know that people and some of the students have mentioned that there are other cities that have a climate action plan. And I hadn't heard anybody talk about out-of-state ones, but I do do quite a few of the Bozeman, Montana meetings because I grew up there. They have an excellent sustainability board. They have a climate action dashboard, and they have a group of advisory people that make a lot of decisions. There's one city staff that's a liaison, and I think it's really worth looking at. So in this next week, I'll try to email you information on that, and hopefully you'll be interested and take the time to read it because I think it's very valuable. And then the last thing is, is I had tried to do this a couple of years ago with, it's a CD called Happy, and it's got a little bonus extra section on Curitiba, Brazil, which is kind of a gold standard for a climate city from the 60s and 70s. So if anybody's.
Thank you so much, Mary.
I'll be asking for people who are interested. Thanks.
Thank you. I will now promote the second commenter. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. I'm not sure I'm on here. I say myself twice. You know, Paul Stickney, Samamish, and Happy New Year. Let's start by facing our number one problem is which direction on housing supplies, services, and transportation is best for our community. This problem has plagued us over 20 years, and it isn't resolved because it's never really been a fair fight. Two things have been missing from making the fight fair. One is complete information, and another is fairly comparing consequences of different ideological directions on housing, services, and transportation. Back in the 1970s, there was a TV show called Truth or Consequences. I'd like to bring this in to the here and now in Samamish with a title ideology, truth, and consequences, reassess ideology. Much information has been inappropriately manipulated and weaponized over time on housing. I call this off-base information. Today, I turned in a public comment with seven batches of information. I'm going to go over four examples from that. And the question is, how do each of the seven of you feel about each of these four examples and the many, many others I sent in? Off-base or on-base? There was an email between two council members stating that attorneys were holding email back from Pam Stewart. Off-base or on-base? Two council members were suggesting to staff that they've denied a town center application. Off-base or on-base? Two council members stating there was agreement of four or five of us. Off-base or on-base? Another suggesting that Stewart be sanctioned for talking about something that happened in an executive session. However, if that something was Stewart mentioning a straw poll, she was on-base. She, by law, had to do that. So was that past Stewart's sanction, off-base or on-base? To get on the same page, to determine the right mix of housing, services, and transportation sustainably for our community, we need accurate on-base information and fairly compared consequences to level-set this conversation. Different ideologies need equal standing and then collaborate to reach the best-informed outcome. How does the city adequately protect our residents from moral, ethical, and legal issues from past and present off-base information? By nipping it in the bud, bringing it to light, taking actions to remedy misinformation, and craft policies from hindering it from happening again. Take these appropriate steps to make it so. Search your mind, heart, and spirit and do the right thing.
Thank you.
Appreciate the guest's speech.
Thank you. I will now promote the third commenter. Ms. Harper Christensen.
Happy 2023, Council, and may we all be well in the new year. My name is Paula Harper Christensen, Samamish resident for 36 years. Thanks to each council member for serving our city. The task of the public servant is monumental and requires a great deal of time, preparation, and strong listening skills. I recently read the oath of office that each of you signed. The oath is a devotion to upholding the ethics of the office by practicing fairness, transparency, and accountability. You have my heartfelt gratitude for the commitment and integrity that each of you took. The current council is facing a dilemma involving possible ethics violation with possible legal implications resulting from the former city manager, Dave Rudat, and some council members at that time. It puts our current council in a grueling position of what to do now. Please listen to the residents who are keeping up with our local government, and let the true meaning of accountability guide your way. Accountability is the only way to ensure justice under the law and the best way to build trust that such a violation of the code of ethics will not happen again. Many of us want to move forward to keep creating beautiful Samamish. However, moving forward is hard when we do not have the truth. To be clear, I have never had any conversation with Councilmember Trine. So there's nothing personal about what I'm about to say, but many of us would like to know why a directive from the former city manager to delete messages quickly was not reported to the entire city council. It appears that no reporting happened. I hope that we never tie secrecy to legitimacy. When a city council is legitimate, they are transparent in its working actions. Secrecy is the gateway to conspiracy and corruption. Complete and visible transparency must be regularly applied to disinfect any government from the toxic temptation of evading the truth. Transparency and accountability are not only the most fundamental requirements of a functioning government, but it is also our right. Be well, dear council, and thank you.
Thank you.
I see no additional commenters. Back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent calendar.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, consent has passed. Next, we're moving on to a presentation with David Pyle, our monthly project update on the comprehensive plan, the housing action plan, and the climate action plan. Sorry, we are waiting on you, David. I could have said something.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to get the screen share set up, so hopefully this comes through. I don't know if you can confirm if you're seeing my screen or not.
Yes, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council, Happy New Year. David Pyle, Community Development. I'm here tonight to provide your second monthly update on major planning projects that are ongoing in the city. Sec. First, I wanted to again draw attention to a new website that is focused on the comprehensive plan update and associated projects. Although now live, this project-specific website is having new content added weekly. Shortly, among other content being added, we will have a chronology of meetings and outreach events posted to the engagement tab, including links to meeting agendas and meeting recordings. We are working to make sure this page is cross-linked to other city pages and that we are directing interested parties to this page. The website is www-envisionssamamish2044.org. In addition to typing the website into your computer browser, the website is also linked through the Community Development Department page and also accessible by using the search box in the upper-right corner of the website by typing the simple words comprehensive plan into the search box. Over the next few months, there will be many meetings on the comprehensive plan, climate action plan, and housing action plan. And the comprehensive plan will continue into 2024. I've listed the scheduled meetings here. There will likely be meetings added as we ramp up outreach efforts on the comprehensive plan, and I'll add meetings every month as I provide the next update on the status of these projects. For now, I've listed the meetings through March. For the comprehensive plan, we continue to focus on developing and finalizing the vision statement, continuing with review of the commerce and PSRC update checklist, and building background information on topics such as land use. Here, I have highlighted comprehensive plan-related meetings through March. On January 17th, we'll hold a work session on land capacity, housing targets, and land use and zoning tools. On February 2nd, the Planning Commission will hold a meeting on the comprehensive plan scope and the proposed draft vision statement. On February 22nd, the City Council will also hold a meeting on the update scope for the comprehensive plan and the draft vision statement. And then, on March 21st, the City Council will consider adopting a resolution setting the scope of the comprehensive plan update and adopting a resolution setting the new revised vision statement. For the climate action plan, our focus is on continuing with grant-funded GHG VMT greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled background work, where we are finalizing the data collection and analyzing data for trends. Once we have completed data collection and analysis, we will continue with development of emissions reduction strategies. One point to keep in mind is that the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategy are due to commerce in June of 2023 under the terms of the grant. Here, I have highlighted climate action plan-related meetings through March. On January 5th, the Planning Commission will hold a kickoff meeting with the project consultant and project team on the climate action plan, and we'll have a work session to review vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions baseline data. Then on January 10th, the City Council will do the same and hold a kickoff meeting with the project consultant and team and have a work session on review of vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions data. Then, on March 2nd, the Planning Commission will review draft vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emission reduction strategies, and the City Council will do the same on March 14th. For the housing action plan, our focus is continuing with development of housing strategies, and we are currently in the housing strategy input phase. The next phase will be drafting of a housing action plan. One point to keep in mind is the adopted housing action plan is due to commerce on June 15th of 2023 per the terms of the commerce grant. Here, I have highlighted housing action plan-related meetings through March. On January 10th, the City Council will hold a work session on shortlisting housing action plan strategies. On January 19th, the Planning Commission will review and continue to develop those shortlisted housing action plan strategies. And on March 2nd, the Planning Commission will review the draft housing action plan in its early stage of drafting. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll be back again to provide an update at the first meeting in February.
Great, thank you, David. Councilmember Howe.
Thanks for the presentation, David. And what I wanted to ask is about the intersectionality of some of the plans that you're talking about. For example, I would say climate action and housing intersect because you may decide, or we may decide as we do our comprehensive plan, that we may look at inclusionary zoning but only have development that has extremely high environmental standards applied to it, for example. So they intersect. So do you have an accommodation for that basically in your schedule to see where there's overlap or opportunities to bolster the plans?
Yes, so what we're going to start, we, so what, there are several tracks, if you consider it this way, that are all running concurrently, and those tracks will start to merge later this spring and into the summer as we start to review the different elements of the comprehensive plan and analyze where changes need to be made to the various elements in response to state law and response to the checklist, and in response to community aspirations. What we're hoping is that the work that's done on the climate action plan and on the housing action plan and work that's done through early outreach in the comprehensive plan, through the vision statement work and through the scoping, is that we'll get an understanding about where there are some of these topical connections across different disciplines, and that will help us identify where we need to start to pull earlier from one topic into another. However, we are planning, and we have been working on a graphic to help show how that that combination of topics works later this late spring and into the summer and fall. It's a fairly complicated one. I know that at one of a recent work planning meeting, we also had conversations about other city projects that are ongoing that we, that might have influence in the comprehensive plan as well. So we're wanting to be aware of where some of these other projects and other, I guess, points of consideration are important and need to be bundled into the comprehensive plan work that's ongoing.
Thank you. And my last question has to do with, I don't know how you would do this, but I was reading in The Urbanist about Redmond's and their comp plan and about how there's concern over the development that was going to be taking place around that transit center because they have, they're looking at doing fast-track changes to their code so vesting doesn't happen for developers, per se. So there's going to be a requirement, for example, to have this inclusionary zoning plus a mandated very green building standards, which is scaring off developers and making them back away. So what I'm thinking is that this is, while it doesn't apply to us, per se, it's one of those things that's happening outside our jurisdiction that's interesting to be paying attention to and just seeing, well, what's going to happen with that? You know, does, what are the impacts? What are the unintended consequences that might be happening there? Redmond's bet, doesn't matter. People are going to build, it's going to be fine. That's what it sounds like. And I'm just curious to like if our, do our planning commissions, like ours, Samamish, and Redmond's, ever get together and do just a sharing of information? Because it would be so interesting to learn what they're learning as they go through their processes and vice versa. So that's just something, it's really hard to pull up and look out and just see what other jurisdictions are doing. But I'm just wondering if there aren't some informational bits and red flags out there for us to just be able to take, pay attention to, and bring into our own thought process.
Yeah, so our planning commissions don't meet. They have it in history, that doesn't mean they can't.
Right.
I think it's a great idea that our elected and appointed officials meet with their neighboring counterparts. School districts as well. I think it's great if the councils can meet with school district board member or elected board members. But we do at the staff level share extensively across the region. You know, we also, in some of our working meetings, say, for example, the grants that we have, there are work group meetings on the grants where the various cities that have grant funding are sharing some of their lessons learned as they go through the process. So that's an example. I do want to improve our relationship with Redmond as Redmond is a little bit ahead in their comprehensive plan process, and they're also taking an additional step that we will not be taking, which is a very expensive step, but a good one, which is that they're completing an environmental impact statement associated with their comprehensive plan update. It's quite an extensive process, so they had to get started earlier. And I have worked quite a bit with Carol Helen, the planning director, in the past and know her very well. And we will be starting to work more closely with them as we start to cover some of the topics that have overlap into Redmond and into some of the patterns that we see about how our cities interrelate with each other. It's a quote as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Mayor, could I add on to that?
Thank you for the comments.
Very quickly. I want to remind Council overall that we do have a joint meeting with the Redmond Council already on the books for, in March. So it's timely to be able to, we'll be pulling together topics for that particular meeting, but that is an opportunity for our entire council to get together with their council and discuss common issues.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks, David. Couple of questions about the greenhouse gas reduction. In the climate action plan, you talk about vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas reductions. Do those greenhouse gas reduction strategies apply to everything, or are they just the transportation-related ones?
So my, I'm not the project manager on that, but I'll try my best to answer the question. So my understanding is that the work that's being done on greenhouse gas reductions primarily relates to, what they're looking at is they're profiling the city and looking across the city at what are, where our emissions come from. And what they're going to be doing is identifying strategies that are the most effective to bring about real change in emissions. And those are most likely to be things that, number one, the city controls, and number two, where the city could have influence over large operations, where the city could lobby PSC, where the city could partner with some of the larger property owners or utilities in the city. But those greenhouse gas emission reduction strategies are not likely to get down at the level of an individual home and some of the outreach that would be necessary to bring about change and behavioral change on an individual's actions.
So are they only transportation-related? Sorry.
No, no, it's way better than transportation, yep.
I mean, I appreciated your answer. I just wanted to make sure that it was comprehensive and not just focused on transportation since it's, whenever it's described, it talks about vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas reduction. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't only looking at transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions.
And the reason why we use those two terms is we will be obligated to collect data and report out on our emissions going forward under state law. So one of the things that the grant helps us do is set a baseline profile of the, on the city so that we can then look at strategies to help reduce miles traveled and emissions. And we will then be required to report out to the state on how successful we are at changing emissions patterns and miles traveled over time. changing emissions patterns and miles traveled over time. So they are related, but they are two different data points that the state is interested in measuring. So we are, we will be required to report out on those. So this is helping us set up a program early by profiling and setting a baseline.
Great. And then do those greenhouse gas emissions look at both the production and consumption side of greenhouse gas emissions? So for those watching at home, production is like when you drive your car, you are creating greenhouse gas emissions from your engine, but consumption is like every time you order something for your house or whatever, there are greenhouse gas emissions associated with all the things that we buy. And so those are consumption-related, so they're not, those greenhouse gases aren't generated in Semamish, but we are, we're sort of contributing to their production because we are consuming things. So will it look at both of those?
So I don't have an answer to that. However, the consultant and project team will be with, be in front of the council on January 10th, so a week from today.
Okay.
And we will definitely have opportunity to discuss that at that time.
Okay. And then just to throw it out there, so they come kind of prepared, does it also look at our partner entities, right? Like EFOR and police and schools and the water districts, et cetera? Because obviously, whatever they're doing within our city limits also will contribute to those vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. So you probably don't know that, but if we can just ask them to come prepared with that as well. I was hoping that part of our plan would be to create kind of the, like the wedge diagram like King County has done across the region that says, you know, here's, here's where our greenhouse gas levels are right now, here's where we have to get to, and every time we, if we do this, it will get us further and further to where we need to be. That's how King County has been doing that for probably a decade now of looking at those and identifying what we think will get us to the commitments that we've made through K-4C and what, some of which are now mandated through state law. So it would be great to understand if we're, you know, kind of how we're doing that. If we're not doing it through the wedge diagram, how are we sort of tracking that says, if we do these 20 things, we'll get 80% of the way there, and then here's how we have to tackle that last 20%.
So we have had very similar conversations internal to the project team, and I will be, you know, happy to hear their response, but I do know that they are, if you look in the agenda bill that will be published, I believe, here pretty shortly regarding next Tuesday's topic on GHD and VMT, there is a section on goal setting, and there is a section on measuring success towards those goals. So I do believe that what you're describing is something that they are working on. I will verify with them and have them prepared to answer any questions you might have about that at the meeting on the 10th.
Okay. And are we using the King County greenhouse gas emission dashboard as our numbers, or are we generating some of our own, or is it a combination?
It is a combination. They've done quite an extensive data collection exercise, working with all of our partners, PSC, working with some of the large property owners, the city, utilities, et cetera. So they've profiled the city quite extensively.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll wait till we see what next week's agenda brings us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, David. Just one or two questions for you. You had mentioned, as we were just talking, about the greenhouse emissions and the vehicle miles traveled reports that are due in June, and I know you had put up a lot of dates and future meetings, and I didn't catch it, but will council get to see those reports before they go to the Department of Commerce?
Yeah, so what's due in June? There are two things that are due in June. We currently have two grants through the Department of Commerce. One is to do a buildup on our city's profile for emissions and vehicle miles traveled, and then also to come up with some reduction strategies that would enable us to reduce miles traveled and pull back on our greenhouse gas emissions. That report is what is due to Commerce in June, the baselining report and the strategies for the VMT and GHD category or topic. The other item that is due to the council in June is the Housing Action Plan, and that needs to be adopted by resolution in June. The greenhouse gas emissions and VMT report and strategies doesn't necessarily need to be adopted by resolution. It, you know, the intent could be to include it in the comprehensive plan. We, at the staff level, would prefer that it's adopted by resolution, as we feel that it really sets a benchmark in time, so that we can rely, rely on that document to move forward with work on the Climate Action Plan and on the environmental chapters of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I think it would be nice if we could see it, you know, along the same timeline as it goes to the Department of Commerce.
Definitely, yeah. It's something that the council will have to endorse before it's sent.
Okay.
You will definitely see it, yes.
Okay, awesome, excellent. My other question was, and I've been looking at the Envision Semamish website, and I think it looks great, and I've been looking at the different elements as they become live. And just for everyone's information, when you go on the homepage, there's a link there that says Semamish Today, and the My Sidewalk report is, has lots of great information on kind of demographic and various statistics about Semamish and where we are right now. And I think it's worth everybody, the public, knowing about it and really going through and taking a look at it. It gives you a very broad picture of where Semamish is right now and has been over the, you know, since the inception of the city. My question about that is, with all this great information that we have in there, and I know you had said at the beginning of your presentation, you're trying to link all the other elements of the city's websites to this particular website, are we going to start reporting this out further to the public so that they can get, you know, these monthly updates that you're giving us on the comprehensive plan, are we trying to get this information out also to the public, not just to the website, but maybe on our newsletter when we start taking that backup? I think this, because this is such a big undertaking for the city, I think we should use every opportunity we can to get at least small snippets of information out to the public and let them know, okay, this is where we are on the comprehensive plan, this is what's coming up, this is where we'd like more public comment, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we should kind of use our newsletter whenever possible to kind of also get that information out there to the public.
We agree, and we definitely would like to do that. And we are working, I believe, there's a meeting coming up here internally pretty soon on, maybe this week or next week, on exactly that topic, is how do we work to leverage the communication tools that we have to make sure the public is aware of all the various projects ongoing in the city right now? There's quite a lot going on.
Yeah.
And we want, we don't want people to be confused, and we want to be efficient in use of their time and how they engage the city as well. We don't want to have so many things going on at different channels that it's hard to keep up and understand what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah. And I think if we can kind of maybe encapsulate it in some kind of, on a page or half-page on our newsletter, kind of saying, this is, in a nutshell, what we're doing, and these are your opportunities to give us feedback, and these are the various websites, and we, you know, really, really would like, the more public input we get, the better plan we'll come out with. So I think we should take every opportunity we can to engage the public. So thank you, David, very much.
I'll definitely carry those comments into our meeting coming up and talk to the communications consultant that we have who's supporting citywide communications. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David.
Mayor, if I may follow up on that. Councilmember O'Farrell, we are, to your point, we are doing just that. We'll be rolling out a communications strategy to try to capture all of our projects that we have going on, where we are looking for, we've heard council very clear about increased public input and getting people involved. I think our goal is to try to provide all the options and then ask people to pick their lane that interests them, so that they're not overwhelmed by trying to say, oh, there's two meetings a week for the next six months that I should attend, and it's hard to know where and when to do that. So we're trying to be deliberate and really teeing up those things, and like David said, using our different communications mediums to try to really be directed about that, so that it's easy to follow and understand, where do I want to be in one of these processes, rather than trying to do them all and not understanding how and when they work? So that is, that's a point well taken, and we are definitely moving to that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenda Pure?
Thank you, Mayor. David, quick question. On the first slide, I think under comprehensive plan, you had a bullet point for gap analysis. Can you refresh my memory again on what we mean by that?
Yeah, so the gap analysis is a tool that we use to address or identify what's changed and what needs to be addressed. The comprehensive plan update is not a complete rewrite of the comprehensive plan. We're not throwing out the comprehensive plan and completely replacing it with a new one. There is much in the comprehensive plan that is valid and still resonates today. However, there are many things that have changed since the comprehensive plan was last updated in 2015. State laws changed, there are changes in the environment, changes in the city, and that gap analysis is really the work that's done to identify where things have changed, how they've changed, and what updates might need to occur to the comprehensive plan in order to address those changes since the comprehensive plan was last updated.
So it's not just limited to one chapter, it's throughout the comp plan that we'll be doing the gap analysis?
That's correct. And the tools that we use to run that gap analysis include the Department of Commerce Comprehensive Plan Update Checklist. It includes the Puget Sound Regional Council Comprehensive Plan Update Checklist. It includes an analysis around consistency with King County county-wide planning policies. It includes an analysis around changes to state law and what might have changed since the last update. It includes an analysis, Commerce has a checklist regarding critical areas, environmentally protected areas, and what might have changed since the last update. We also look at the community and look at information on, from sources like the My Sidewalk profile that is provided on the website to look at, you know, where we stood back in 2015 versus where we stand now, and what are some things we might need to consider. The visioning work and some of the background work that went into the visioning work is also another point that we consider, is, you know, what, what are some of the things that people were talking about, that they really want to see encapsulated in the vision statement that might not resonate throughout the comprehensive plan, that we might want to look at? There are other things, such as changing policies to make sure that they're actionable and that there is an implementation side to the comprehensive plan where there might not have been in certain areas. So there is a whole host of things that goes into that gap analysis. The gap analysis ultimately feeds into the comprehensive plan update scope. It helps inform the scope, which then enables us to take on the rest of the work into 2024, updating all of the elements and looking at how it all fits together, to ultimately plan for the community, or a community that is consistent with what the vision statement tells us that you're looking for in a community.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Hi, David. Happy New Year. I just had a couple of questions. The first one is, when are we planning on getting started with the Sustainability Commission? Is there any hard plans on that?
So I would defer to the city manager on that. I think that's a budget item and a staffing item, and I think that's in the city manager's office, Scott?
That's correct, David. I can take that one, deputy mayor. We're looking at that, where we need to find, we need to get a staff member on board, and then we need to figure out, it's one of the things that I have on my work plan to do with council is to figure out what that commission might look like, how would it function? Is it temporary? Is it permanent? And what the task of that commission would be? Because any, any, any commission like that requires a charge and an actual work plan, and those still need to be developed first. So that'll be an ongoing conversation with council as we work through these items moving forward. We'll be working on that issue as well.
Okay, is there a timeline in mind?
I don't have a specific timeline for you. I know it's on, it's on the list to get started as soon as possible, but I don't have a specific timeline for you. I would say that there are a number of components that we probably need to get in place first before we can really then turn around and start identifying or giving work to a group to do. One of the things that we want to avoid more than anything is if we ask people to volunteer and step up, that we treat their time well and be specific and clear about what we're asking them to do and what work they're going to be, and advice are going to be providing you, because ultimately, all of your boards and commissions are advisory to the council, and so we want to make sure that we're, we have that nailed down first.
Okay. And my last question is, David, is will a consultant be providing us sort of like, you know, a broad, like, outline of what the Climate Action Plan will include? I mean, this is kind of related to the question that councilmember Stewart's asking about consumption, like, we're a little bit feeling in the dark as to like what this plan is going to include. So will there be something from the consultant that outlines broad topics, so we know?
Yes, so at the January 10th meeting, we'll be kicking off the Climate Action Plan work and the development of a Climate Action Plan. At that meeting, we'll be able to talk about the various components that might be included in a Climate Action Plan, and the city council can provide direction to the consultant and the staff as to what to consider in the full scope of that work, if that helps.
Yep, thank you.
We got more, David. Councilmember Treen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Scott, I was just thinking on communications, that slide that David had of the schedule of the meeting schedule with the two different colors, that could even just be on the homepage as a possible, you know, right now, we have now accepting applications for, that goes away, and then those could replace it, or at least be in that flip screen that shows it right there. So I think that'd be an easy communication on our website to start. Thanks. Back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank you, councilmember. Appreciate the thought. We'll look into doing that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, Scott, would it be possible for us to ask that, like, next week you come back to us with, what are all the things we need to have to get that commission going? Because I feel like, I feel like we need that commission to help us set some of the scope and the goals, but we have to set the scope and the goals like ASAP. So I would love to see us be able to start to put something together. We have people, we have people here this evening, actually, who have been really asking how they can get involved, and so I just think there's an urgency to that. So I don't want to, like, pick a date for you, but can we get a commitment on a date when we can get sort of the, here's the list of all the things we need to get done before we can seat that, you know, start to seat that commission?
I appreciate the thought, councilmember. I would say this was going to be one of the things that we were going to be discussing as part of the work plan when we get to the actual retreat on the 28th. But we can try to pull some things together. I don't know that we'd be able to do it by next Tuesday, but we can shoot for the 28th, that 17th. I will tell you that on the 17th, that meeting is absolutely packed, and I'm not sure that we, we have other items that we need to try to take care of in that meeting. So one thing, what it might have to be is, it might have to be a starting iterative conversation with council. Maybe we can start it over email and start talking about what that looks like, but from a staff perspective, we haven't had the chance to really sit down and hammer out, how's it going to work, who's going to staff it, when would they meet, who might be involved? But more importantly, quite frankly, what are they going to do and what is council, what are they going to be advising you on specifically? And that's one of the pieces that, like David was saying, all of these are moving in concert with each other, and I very much hear that council wants to get started right away, but I want to make sure that when we do, again, that we are being respectful of our volunteers' time, and we are very clear about how often, what we are asking them to do, and what product they're going to be producing for council.
Love, love all of that, Scott, and happy to comply. I think we just got to get moving on it. So if there are things you need from us to be able to put pen to paper and say, here's what we need from you, maybe it can just be part of a city manager report that if we don't have time on the agenda to actually cover it, and then that way we can be doing homework. But I do think we need to work some of that out, probably sooner rather than later, because that commission probably needs to be feeding into this Climate Action Plan, that, you know, we've got some stuff that's already going to be due in June, and if we wait too much longer, we won't be able to get the community input or the commission input on that.
Yep, appreciate that. And David, correct me if I'm going astray here on the Climate Action Plan, but that will wind up being a very high-level plan, and that will identify follow-up work that needs to be done, specific plans, like, for instance, a fleet's assessment, and I know you had already brought up this issue previously. That's one of those things that we That's one of those things that we know is going to come out of, of Climate Action Plan. It's kind of low hanging fruit, if you will. But the plan is going to identify that that's something that needs to happen as a follow-up. The, the majority of the plan, and again, David, correct me if I'm going astray here, but it's a high level, it's going to be a high level assessment that's going to identify a number of things that we need to follow up on. So I, I see in some measure, I see what some, some sort of a climate commission would be helping us moving through the rest of those pieces. And there will be many, and there's, there's no way we're going to get to all of them this year because it's going to lay out a number of work items moving forward that we will have. And then council can decide what moves forward bef, you know, at first and, and what do we push down the road depending on resources and council interest. So I think this is an ongoing iterative conversation. And again, want to be respectful and responsive to council. And I know this is important. And so we will come back with some concepts. But I also know that there's a lot of work that still has to come before we are, it's not yet clear in my mind. How about I, I'll start with that. And that's one of the things that we need to continue the conversation at the staff level and really get that clarified so that we can bring you something that's coherent for you to respond to and give us direction on.
Great, just let us know when we can expect that so that we can at least let the folks that are reaching out to us asking us how they, how and when they can get involved, we can at least share that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And I know David had said that he felt like before we could finalize a Climate Action Plan, we needed to have a lot of community involvement. And so again, it feels like there's a chicken and an egg problem going on and I'd like to just crack the egg and let's just go.
Understood. And I, and I would just say, councilmember, that there is a fair amount of public involvement built into these stages of the Climate Action Plan. So, and I know that's not as directed as something like a climate commission. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but that's what you were referring to might be different than what I'm referring to. Is, is that a fair statement, David?
Yeah, so the, the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled work is set with a deadline. And that really is about profiling and identifying some, some measures to go about bringing a reduction in miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. There are, there's a whole other body of work that follows that in developing a Climate Action Plan. And there are many different paths we can take with that. That happens, has to, that happens in, in concert with the development of the, the, the Comprehensive Plan Update. And it informs the, the environmental elements of the Comprehensive Plan Up- Update. The, the challenge around forming and utilizing a, a, some sort of a environmental commission or sustainability commission is, number one is the staffing of who staffs it. Community development does not have staff available or resources available to operate in, in commission. It's about a 0.75 FTE just, just to manage the commission itself. We don't have staff for that. And it's also a matter of screening the recruits. We have to staff up in order to, to start to operate that commission. So there is some lead time that goes into that. It's the third of the year, January 3rd. So, you know, we, we did just have our budget take effect over the weekend. So we can start to now recruit for some positions that were added going into '23. Very much look forward to adding some of the resources. Thank you, council, for some of the things that you provided. That's going to take us a while. We have many positions that will be opening up here for recruitment. So we're going to do our best to try to add resources. However, there are some things that we just can't take on until we have adequate resources to staff them.
Scott, would this not be the new position that we approved, that we had much debate over? That David said we didn't actually need it for another year and a half, but we approved it for this year anyway? Couldn't that person take this on?
Councilmember Stewart, yes. I think what David was alluding to is that person, we have to get that person on board before they can then turn around and work on putting all that together. That, that's a logistical issue. It's a little inside baseball, but it's, that's a logistical issue of, of timing. It generally takes about three months to do a full recruitment before we can get somebody in the door. That's the average timeframe for doing that. And I think that that probably doesn't meet up with your expectations of when we would be starting this. So this is, this is a little bit of our challenge and we'll work on that and try to figure out if there, if we can truncate that path somehow to get that going. But that, you're right, that position would be the person that would be staffing the climate commission or whatever we're going to call it. And that, but we need to get somebody on board and get them started to be able to do that work. As David pointed out, it's a, it's a substantial amount of work to man a commission to the, to the pieces that I laid out earlier previously, which are, you know, we, all the, the prep work that like Lita and the staff do for our, our meetings, the same goes for any of our boards and commissions. It is a not inconsequential amount of work to actually manage one of those. But again, my commitment to all of you continues to be that we'll try to get that started as soon as possible. And in the meantime, I, I would want to point out to our residents and everyone else that there are a lot, a lot, oh my goodness, we're going to have a lot of public input opportunities. It won't be the same as an actual commission appointment, but there will be a lot of opportunities in the near term until we can really get this off the ground. But I want to make sure that it's sustainable moving forward, no pun intended. But that once we get it in place, that we can really sustain it and we have continued work for that group to do. Because again, asking somebody to commit and then not having anything for them to do is probably my worst case scenario. Because then we're, it feels like we're not being fair to our residents. So I just want to make sure that we are on track when we get, when we get to that point.
Awesome. I can only hope that a sustainability commission would run out of work within the next year or two, but I don't think that's going to be the case. Thanks.
All right, David, I don't see any other hands. Thank you so much for the update and we will be seeing a lot of you.
Yes, I'll see you next week at the earliest. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Bye.
All right, next, under unfinished business, we have the approval of Resolution 2023-986, the City Manager Employment Agreement. So I believe we'll be taking a motion from the floor and then you'll, if that passes, you'll be doing the oath? Okay, all right. So I will open it up for a motion to approve that resolution. And I do want to say thank you to, who's it, Pam, Ratusja and Karen for being on our subcommittee in negotiating this. Because I know that's extra time, emails, probably lots of emails and phone calls. So thank you, guys. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. I move that we approve the resolution to approve the City Manager Employment Agreement with Scott McCall. Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Carrie, should we provide for the public any information so people know or just refer them to the packet?
Oh, she raised her hand. I see it. No.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening, Carrie Sands, your interim city attorney. And I would just again want to congratulate Scott and also the council for this process and remind the council of a couple of things. As councilmember Stewart just noted, the entire employment agreement is part of the packet and available for public review. Just want to call to your attention Section 11 regarding the performance evaluation and how within 30 days, the council is supposed to meet with the city manager to establish major goals and objectives for the coming year to then be evaluated next November, December timeframe. Other than that, everything's in the packet. And again, congratulations.
We haven't voted yet. Carrie? No, I'm just kidding. You can't say congrats yet. No, I'm just kidding. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve Scott as our city manager and finalized employment agreement, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, congratulations, Scott. Thank you for being amenable. So, yes, congrats. And then I think our city clerk will be doing the oath. I'll just...
Tell me what to say there.
Okay.
Please ra- raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Scott McCall.
I, Scott McCall.
Have been duly appointed to the office of the City of Sammamish City Manager.
Having been duly appointed to the office of City of Sammamish City Manager.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
As described by law and to the best of my ability.
I will support and maintain the laws and constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and maintain the laws and constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the City of Sammamish.
And the ordinances of the City of Sammamish.
Great, thank you.
Would you like to say a word or three?
Three, that's all you get.
Yeah.
You put it up there. I do want to say a couple of words. I really want to say thank you to council for putting your trust in me. I'm very humbled and appreciative of the opportunity to work with this council and this community. It's a, it's a great community. There, it's full of great people and it holds a tremendous amount of promise. And I'm very excited to move forward and work with all of you to, to do the things that you want us to do. It's a great staff here. I can't say enough about the quality of staff we have and the great work that they already do. And I know we have a lot on our plate, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working together and making Sammamish to continue to be a great place to live and work and to improve it as well. So thank you so much for the opportunity and I'm excited to get started.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Lita. So lastly, do we have any council reports? I don't, I didn't see any email, but if you have any verbal, councilmember Trine?
Sorry, so I'd like to step back in the agenda just for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's all right with you, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Carrie Sands made the comment, or attorney Carrie Sands made the comment that we have to do a kind of a criteria for evaluation of the city manager that would be due in 30 days. And right now we have nothing that I'm aware of. And I wonder if it would be, we, we've done this in the past, would be to form a subcommittee to write those and present those, get agreement from Scott on those and then be ready to present them to the council for approval. It looks like based on the calendar we currently have, we'd have to do that by January 17th. Because the February 7th would push us over the 30 days, so.
We do have an idea. I'll let Scott take over.
Yep, thanks.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And, and councilmember Trine, I think as long as we come to agreement by the end of the month, I think waiting a couple of days to approve it is probably not, is probably okay. I shared with the mayor earlier this morning that other cities, when they do these, there are consultants that come in and do city manager reviews. And they do them on the front end and then the back end to help with that. Because I know a, a lot of you have day jobs and that trying to get that done in that shorter time period is going to be challenging. But it also allows you to have that professional level review to come in and hear from all of you what you want and then work with me on getting that finalized. And so what I was going to suggest to all of you, as I'll suggest it tonight, is that the council would hire this person. And I'm, it's on my, on my list to reach out to a couple that I know of. And then they would report to you and work with you to get the, the goals and objectives and then to come back at the end of the year to do the, at that review for you.
Councilmember Stewart?
I'd like to move that we direct the city manager to find a consultant to come in and help us with goals and objectives and city manager reviews.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think Scott covered it.
Yeah, it was great. Yeah, thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, Scott, you let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, councilmember Trine, for stepping that back. Good call. Okay, any other, or any council reports, period? Or do we have a city manager report? All right, yeah, go ahead.
We do have one. So council, as you all will recall, we have boards and commission appointments coming up. Next week, we have it on the agenda to do at the beginning of the study session. However, we had some questions, and I'm going to turn it over to the clerk's office, that we need, that we'd like to identify upfront and get clear direction to make the process smoother going forward. So if I could, turn it over to Lita and Krista.
Okay, so today was the application deadline for boards and commissions. We have 20 applicants spread across the multiple commissions and boards. And so that we had some questions for the council on how they want to proceed. And this, this also got emailed to the list of applicants. So we have five questions here, which I should probably make a little bit smaller. Okay. Okay, the first question is, does council want to discuss and vote on the board commission applicants at next week's study session?
I don't think we got all the applications. We got the list, but I don't.
I have, I sent the list that you'll get the applications tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And you got the first batch of applications, you just didn't get the final that came in today.
And, and council, just to follow on that, we discussed this earlier in the day. And we know you don't have all the applications, but what we noticed is, for instance, we have a couple where there's, only one person has applied for, for two positions. And conversely, there are some that have applied. Yeah, the Human Services Commission, there's only one applicant for two vacancies. But there are a couple of people that have the commission listed as a backup or a secondary request. So we're trying to figure out the right path forward. And then to Krista's questions for you, do you want to, I think it's to discuss and vote or just to do interviews next week and vote the week after? So that's, that's one question. And then Krista, if you want to go through the rest.
The second question, does, does the vote require interviews or is council comfortable using the submitted applications, which you all have by tomorrow morning? And will the people be able to interview in person or can it be a hybrid format? How many questions and then how to handle the secondary applications? Probably the last go around, we did do two interviews for people who applied for multiple commissions. And then do you want to vote by ballot or via motion? And then whether to break it apart into the 10th and the 17th? So voting at the first meeting and approving resolutions on the consent and calendar on the 17th. So those are, those are a lot of different things to consider.
Yeah.
So, Krista, if you would, Mayor, if I could, just really quickly, if you would do the follow-up where staff does have a recommendation for you, so before we go into, this might make it easier. That's what, that's what leading into, so.
So this would be our recommendation for this time. And then going forward, we would use the same process repeatedly. The selection process is during the second meeting of January each year. Council selects at that meeting and then approves resolutions via the consent calendar at the next meeting. The candidates can interview in person or online. And then there would be one question, the same of each candidate, as they have already answered questions in the written application. Council selection voting is by written ballot with the results shared on the screen for transparency. And those were the staff recommendations.
All right, thank you. Council, any thoughts? Councilmember Howe?
I don't believe your mic is on.
There's one thing I'd like to ask the couns- council though, is do you believe it is better to leave a space vacant than to put someone in it that may not be the most appropriate?
I will let you know when I look at the applications.
Okay.
That's a great question, though.
Because just personally, I, I'm okay with keeping that space vacant if we don't have the right person to fill it. So I, I just don't want us to feel pressured to, you know, put names into slots.
So, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to ask Karen, would you, would we reopen applications then? I was just going to ask Karen, would we reopen applications then for, if there's a continued vacancy?
That would be the right thing to do, to continue to look in the same way you would for an open job, until you find the right fit. Prolonged process, absolutely. But I think these commissions are important, and I want to imbue them with frankly more importance.
Cool. Did you have anything else? Okay. Yeah, I'm good, I'm probably good with voting, like I said, until we see the applications, but they do have several questions, and they have, well, if it's anything like that hard copy we've got, it's quite a thick packet. So there is a lot of information in there. So I feel comfortable as of now, unless there's something that's completely crazy in the applications that's very confusing, I'm comfortable with voting. Does anyone else have any other ideas? Are head nods sufficient? Oh, councilmember Stewart?
Sorry, so were you suggesting we will do an interview process, or we will base it just on applications?
Sorry. Oh, you want one question?
Like if we're following staff recommendations, we would get to ask one question of each person.
It's step four.
So.
If they are desired. I was good without interviews, but if you all want an interview with one, I don't know how many applicants we have.
It's hard to say, since we haven't read all the applicants, applications, and I know they just came in, so I'm not saying like, shame that you didn't get that turned around in five minutes, but more just, I guess I'd want the option to ask questions because we haven't seen all the applications. And if they left something, and you read that, and you're like, ah, like, I think I need to know more about this person, I think it would be good to have that option. And for people who might be applying to two, we would ask them one question for their primary and one for their secondary, if we felt the need to do that, because I think we may, we may need to do that for human services. I think that's the only one, but.
Yeah, so I think that would be not selecting at the next meeting, or maybe anyways.
We still could, we still could select.
Or Scott.
Yeah. Would still get to ask the question first. So that's why I was trying to ask for clarification. Are we going to ask them a question before we just select them? And I think I'd like to.
Too, I appreciate that, and I think this is why, in talking with the clerk's staff, we wanted to get this clarified. If we're going, if council would like to ask a question of the applicant, then we probably need to ask the same question of every applicant. We were sort of positing among us, if it's a three-minute question or a time to respond is about three minutes, that's about a five-minute block per candidate. By the time you, one finishes, you get the other one, whether they're pulled up or they get up. And so given the number of candidates we have among the different ones, that's a good hour off the top. So one of the things we just want to make sure of is how much time you all want to commit to the process when we get into that moment. And that's why we are trying to suggest for you all that if there is a question that you want to ask applicants, even if it's just to say, self-identify why you want to be on the particular commission, or tell us about yourself, you know, your background and why you want to be on the commission, and that's fine, we just have to know going in to block out that much time. And so that's why I just wanted to make sure that we're clear now, so that when we get into the process, everybody knows and understands. Because if you'll recall, last year, for those that were with us for the entire year, we did this three or four times for, because we kept having to reappoint to the commissions because somebody would move to something else, and so we'd have to go back and do the process over again. So we just want to make sure that we're clear and consistent moving forward.
I feel like it would be a different question based on the commission, right? Like what I ask the arts commissioners might not be the same as what I would ask the planning commissioners, but.
And again, councilmember, I appreciate that. I think the question would be, no pun intended, will it be one, or is it one per person? I think we were suggesting the same question, rather than doing individual, the council would agree on what the question is. And we asked that same one, rather than, in the past, we've done, every council member gets their own individual question. That takes quite a bit of time, and that's okay if that's what council wants to do. We just want to be clear going in.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you for the floor. Yeah, I think the staff recommendation is fine, mainly because in four, where it says if interviews are desired, so that means that some of them, some candidates, we don't need to talk to, because there's only one candidate, and we like them, and we vote for them, and it's a done deal. So I think this is fine, the way it's written, and then we just need to determine which candidates we want to interview, let them know, and give them a heads up on what that one question is. And I think we could come to one question, and it would be based on the board that they're applying for. Still one question. So if it's to the Arts Commission, it could be just a specific question to all the candidates for the Art Commission, one for the Planning Commission. It's not too difficult. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I agree. I think there should be a question, whether it's too generic, tell us about yourself, or whatever we land on. But I do think there should be a question, and it should be the same one for everyone. Having been on commissions myself, I think it's part of also deciding to a candidate, you know, how serious are you about being on a commission? And coming, taking part in an interview, and thinking about why you're doing this is important. So I think we should engage, and we should, and it is a valuable exercise, and it is worth our time, and it's worth putting our time into coming up with a question to ask our citizens who are interested in engaging in this way. And there should be a bit of a process, so I am in favor of a question.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I agree to asking one question for each candidate. These commission appointments are important. They are for your terms, and I want to make sure we get the right candidates for the right positions.
So probably in the interest of also being fair, everyone's going to need a question, is my guess? Or can we pick and choose?
I think that's up to council.
Okay.
How you want to do that.
Like how councilmember Trine said, if there's only one for one. But I think everyone's going to need a question. So, and then we could also, like councilmember Trine said, you know, one question for all the planning commission, whatever, but then if people vote or have a first and a second, then we would have to ask them two questions potentially. And then my last thing would be questions before that we asked, like last year, I think you've put into email to us, and we can kind of vote. Would that be a good way to, because I'm like, us making up questions, again, that's going to take us days. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll have the clerk's office send those out. I think that was going to be my follow-up, is to say, you know, if we're going to get these out and let people know that they need to show up, and here's the question, that we need to sort that out by the end of this week, and no later than that, so that we can get that all squared away. So we'll have, Lita, you want to?
Yeah, I have a question. So is your intention to have all 20 people in attendance, or will you? No.
I'm good with either way. Are you guys good with hybrid, online or in person? Hybrid or in person?
Are you going to be interviewing? I have a different opinion. Either hybrid or in person, all 20 candidates?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone will get a question.
Okay, good.
But they can be here or not.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb? Oh, councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so when you guys did it last year, how many questions did you ask each person? You had, you said you had an agreed-upon set of questions. Can we, can we skip the, can we jump the shark and just use whatever questions you asked last year and just go with that? If it's like two?
I was just consulting with Krista. I thought those questions were the ones that we were going to use in the application, and then we added, did we add additional questions during the meeting?
Yeah, I thought we did, and then we like went all popcorny, and like we all did one, and then it was like, you know, like popcorn, you know, popcorny. Yeah.
We just do this for Planning Commission, like in July?
I can't remember.
I feel like we just did it.
No clue.
We did just appoint in July, because we had to replace councilmember O'Farrell on the Planning Commission. So that would work for the Planning Commission. I think the question for all of you would be, would the same question work for the different commissions? Because councilmember Stewart, you were pointing out, you wanted different questions.
I think they would be different. Like what you asked the Arts Commission is very different than Parks, very different than Planning, so, yeah.
Sure. So I think the challenge there is, we can pull the questions that were asked previously, but I think we'll have to sort out by commission if you want to do a different question than we need. We will, we'll need to, we'll go back and figure out a way to have you all weigh in over the next day to make sure that we can get agreed-upon question for each commission process.
And perhaps the ones that are twofer, we can just have them like answer both in one, because like for their time, so they don't have to wait around. Councilmember Howe?
Yeah, I don't want to, I want to emphasize that we would like to see them here in person. My concern, when I see different commission meetings, that there's some people that just don't attend. They're online, and it simply isn't the same experience for having everyone there. And so I'm, you know, I have a concern, frankly, if they cannot show up for something like this, and I have a concern if they can't attend on a fairly regular basis in person. So I'm fine, keep it hybrid for the interviews, but I have a very strong bias for in-person.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess, you know, there are a lot of extenuating circumstances, and there are things flying around now, so there may be people who have particular reasons why they can't be here, so I wouldn't want to be biased against them if they had a particular health concern. It's still. I think it's non-inclusive if we kind of throw that out there. If we're creating a hybrid opportunity, then it needs to not be biased if they show up hybrid. If that's going to count against them, we should just tell them they have to come in person. That would just be my thing. Like we do a lot of inclusivity in my group, and there are, there can be a lot of reasons why people might not be able, you know, the commission meetings aren't on Tuesday nights. Maybe they can attend in person any night but Tuesday, but they have to watch their kids on Tuesday or something, I don't know. I just, I don't want to be biased, just because of that.
So if you find questions, I know they're somewhere, then would you want us to designate planning and voting? Oh, sorry, Krista.
Well, would you like me, I don't know if that hurts the process, would you like me to read the questions from last time, or is that corrupt? Okay, but last time, there were four questions, and each candidate had up to five minutes to respond to the questions. But, and most of the people did not actually reach the five minutes, which surprised me, but I guess I talked too much. Thank you.
Yeah, I think email them, and then we can vote on top questions, and I'm sure it will kind of be obvious which ones they're going to, maybe not. Great, that was super clear. What are we citing tonight? No.
No.
Yeah, we'll like vote to them individually, so like don't reply all, and then they'll be able to tally.
Yeah, we will follow up with you all with the questions that have been previously asked, and then figure out a way to say, if you want to put a question under a certain commission or add your own, we'll have to get those back, and then go back out once we get all of them to, basically, we'll probably ask you guys to vote on ranked order if we get more than one for a commission, just so that we can try to get to agreement on that. So there may be a couple of rounds of emails, and again, it'll be replied directly back to Krista and Lita to try to get to that point. I think we can get there. But again, this is why we wanted to make sure to have this discussion tonight, so we weren't doing it next week, when they're in the room. One thing I did hear from councilmember Howe, and I just want to get head nod from council, that the preference would be in-person if possible, understanding that councilmember Stewart is pointing out, some people may not be able to, and if so, then we will accommodate accordingly, if that works, councilmember Stewart. I understand that not everybody is, can make it. And it is, I mean, a week is a fair amount of time, but it's also a little bit short if you have a regular schedule to try to make accommodations. So we will all ask the clerk's office to notify all the applicants that we would prefer in-person. And then we will get all those emails out, and hopefully by next week, we will be all set up and ready to go.
And then we will write this down. Yeah.
Well, hopefully, we won't have quite as many rounds of reappointments as people move up.
That's true.
So hopefully, this will be, you know, maybe one of two for this next year where we're actually appointing. But it may not, and if not, then at least we have an agreed-upon process, and that'll help smooth things out.
Yeah. Thank you, Krista and Lita, too. All right, any other, was there anything else for the city manager report?
No, thank you.
Oh, good, all right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Oh, I was like, what? Okay, by six, one, we are adjourned. My jaw is still on the ground. Thank you.